We're ready to get started.
Yeah.
So with the pre-meeting, let's do a quick review of the agenda. The flag is back, yay. Okay. So we have several staff updates. We're going to get an update on the strategic plan, the paid family leave policy during the COVID period. And then the main thing we're going to spend most of our time on is further discussion about the FY21 budget. Are there any other items that people would like to cover during this pre-meeting today? All right, then let's get started. And I think we're going to kick it off with the strategic plan. And Rachel Nygaard is with us to lead us on this issue. Hey, Rachel, thanks for being here.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We're here to talk about strategic plan. And Max is going to pull up a PowerPoint presentation. I'm here presenting on behalf of staff that have been working with the board as you've moved through the process of strategic planning. Eric Hardy is also with me, Director of Performance Management, as his team is assisting with implementation of the plan. In the way of a recap, as a reminder to the members of the Board of Commissioners and anyone else that might be following along from home, the approach that Buncombe County used for the strategic plan was to bring together voices. This is a commissioner-driven strategic plan. And you all have included department head, county leadership, department heads, other county employees, as well as members of the public throughout the process as you've planned, and also leaned heavily on data to understand how we can set a course for moving forward. Also, in the way of recap, as you remember, we started this process last July with a kickoff workshop facilitated by Rebecca Ryan with Foresight. And we also had facilitation support throughout the process from Donna Warner, who's with UNC Chapel Hill. Held a series of workshops in the fall with members of the Board of Commission, working to review trends and set priorities, to identify focus areas, both community focus areas as well as foundational focus areas, and begin to articulate goals within those focus areas. In November, we, in October and November, we held a series of public input sessions. Across those 13 sessions, which were held at various locations across Buncombe County, different times of the day, days of the week, we had 271 participants from the community who came and weighed in. We also held a series of employee workshops, again, held at diverse places throughout the county to maximize participation from various employees across departments at different kinds of position levels during different kinds of jobs. And we had 182 employees attend those workshops. So here we are in the spring. The plan was adjusted in your December workshop incorporating feedback that came from those public input sessions. And the plan writing has been underway. We had originally had it on your docket to take up for consideration for adopting in March, but March threw us a curveball. And so currently, we're looking at, this would be an agenda item for your next meeting, which is May 5. You receive the plan by email today. And here's a snapshot of what's included. The document kicks off with vision and mission and values. New values were articulated for Buncombe County by the Board of Commissioners through the plan, including respect, integrity, collaboration, honesty, and equity. You'll remember equity was an item that was added in as a value after receiving input from the public input sessions. The document also contains four community focus areas. Educated and capable community, environment and environmental and energy stewardship, resident well-being, and vibrant economy. These four community focus areas are articulated through 13 broad goals, community goals, which are included in the plan and displaying on the screen. And these goals will be covered in more detail, both later in the plan and later in the slides. In addition to those four community focus areas, there are three foundational focus areas which were articulated in the plan, including equity, operational excellence, and resources. These focus areas are also supported by goals. There are nine foundational goals in the plan within these areas. You'll see that the strategic plan document has a page for each goal within the community focus areas that provides more description, including definitions and rationale, as well as objectives, and example initiatives, programs, and policies that might be underway now or that might be on the forefront, which would be undertaken over the course of this five-year plan. The county staff, through a departmental business planning process, once the plan is adopted, will take those goals that are within the plan a step further and identify what we're calling tier-two goals. And those goals will be very specific in terms of covering what will be done, when it will be done, and by whom, and how we will put values to each of the measures and be able to track what kind of progress we're making. And all of that tracking and reporting will be done online, as it is now. If you go to buncomcounty.org/2025, you can see all the documents that were part of the planning process, part of the workshops and the materials that have come up, that we've come up with so far. And the plan would be to put our tracking dashboards there in the future. We've included some example tier-two goals to give a sense of what that might look like. So for example, working on the category, the goal articulated in the strategic plan, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, might take shape as a tier-two goal as increase the number of alternative fuel vehicles in the county fleet by 5% by 2025. That's a sample or example of a tier-two goal. That process has not, has not been completed yet. And you'll see there's a department that would own each of the goals so that we can have accountability built in. So I'm here briefly in front of you today just to let you know that you've been emailed the plan. We will publish the draft plan on your website as part of the packet for your next meeting. That typically goes up a week in advance. So on April 29, the agenda will go up for the May 5 meeting, and the plan will be posted as part of your packet. And you'll see on the May 5 agenda, an item for taking up for consideration, adopting the plan. Should that be adopted, it will take effect July 1 and stay in place until 2025. Staff will continue with and fully implement the business planning process that I mentioned, as well as project implementation, reporting, monitoring, and evaluation. So your task between now and May 5 is to review the plan as you've received it. You will, of course, be in communication with your county manager. Each of you will hear from Rebecca Ryan, the facilitator that's been in touch with you throughout the process. And if you have feedback or directives for staff in helping you get to a plan that you're ready to adopt, we will receive that from you. Are there any questions for today?
Were those goals that you listed samples of actual goals from the plan? Or are they just sort of hypothetical illustrations?
I think that these are hypothetical. I'm going to turn my head around and look at Eric. So they're identified and suggested, but not incorporated yet because there's no process for incorporating them?
Okay, I may have missed part of the process then. So the plan that we're going to review next week won't have tier-two goals in it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We wanted Board of Commissioners to hear a description of what that business planning process will look like.
Okay.
So that you can have the sense of the broadest to the most detailed as it gets to rolled out to the implementation level.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, questions?
I only had one thought. You know, it just, it hit me when I saw two of our goals that were, two of them are resident well-being and vibrant economy. And both of those have been dramatically affected. And I'm not saying we changed anything, but I'm wondering, you know, when we look at our strategic plan, planning, how does, what we're in the middle of now, you know, what adjustments, if any, we should think about as we look at the next several years, as we, as we learn from what we're going through. And it's probably a little early to do that. So the strategic plan, to some extent, is a living document. So it might be, might be worthwhile as we look at our goals to, to think about that in the next, in the next few months or year.
I think it's, it's an excellent point. I mean, I don't want us to kind of, you know, walk away from all the work that we've done on this. And this, this emergency that we're going through right now will look a lot different in a couple of months than it does today. And this is, this is a long-term kind of vision.
Sure.
So we don't want to, we don't want to, you know, stop working towards that. But this is more than, you know, this is more than the normal kind of curveballs that we see thrown at us. So, I mean, part of it, I guess, just, you know, is, is just sort of, you know, what does the near-term COVID challenge mean to us in terms of thinking about the longer-term goals? I mean, I just kind of keep thinking about what are the, you know, what are the other kind of things that we might need to do as a county commission that we would not normally have to do but for this unique situation? Additional community needs that will be there that we wouldn't have known about when we were going through this, this process? So, but it is such a distinct and significant issue that it kind of warrants its own plan, right? Like how we're going to be focusing on that. I think we're all kind of living into that. So.
Commissioner Belcher.
No, go ahead. I still got my thought. Go ahead, you go.
I'll try to hold on to mine for a second.
Doesn't always happen, but I got it.
I appreciate you raising that. And I mean, I think it seems fairly safe to say that at least the next year will feature COVID-19 as an issue at some level. And some of the predictions around when a vaccine may be available unfortunately extend beyond a year. So as we're talking this through, it might be interesting to think about what, like trying to articulate more what that runway might look like.
So, so not to get into weeds too much, but y'all know I've had some experience with Franklin Covey and, and this goal setting and lead measures and lag measures and all that. So, and it's way in the weeds. Okay. However, when you're, since our resident well-being and vibrant economy, half of our strategic plan, major goals, have been dramatically impacted. And we can actually, as we go into goal setting, and, you know, whether we're, you know, six months or six weeks or, you know, six years into the effect of COVID, you know, the, the lead measures and lag measures that we could watch for now may move over into something similar to what we're going through. So if this happens, then we do this. We measure certain things so, so that we can kind of be in front of something. But anyhow, just, 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 just a thought. When I, when I saw the four goals, it just hit me. And I wrote them, made a quick note on both of them. But as we move forward and looking at the goals and the measurement of those goals, maybe we include what we're going through.
All right, Rachel. So thank you so much. Look forward to talking about this further at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, next up, Family First Coronavirus Response Act Paid Family Leave. And Sharon Burke is going to present this item.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right. So I'm here today to discuss the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. And what I wanted to do is just provide you all an overview of the act and how that will, the act is going to affect us here at Buncombe County. So you should have received a email that is a memo for me. And you'll have a second one that I just gave to Lamar on the Paid Family Leave Act. Oh, they have? Oh, okay. Perfect. So there's, there's two memos. There's one on the Family First, and the second memo is on paid family leave. Okay. So the first one I want to talk about is the Family First. And so it does blend in together, so bear with me for a little bit. So on March 17, I came forward and had a conversation with you all on the benefits of a paid family leave program whereby we would offer families an additional eight weeks of paid family medical leave. And that would have been to provide some support, financial support for them while they dealt with, or the birth of a child, an adoption, or to care for a very sick family member. Well, on March 18, the federal government, President Trump, signed into law the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. And you'll see it's FF-CRA. It's spoken to and the public by that name. But what that does is, is this act has two components to it. And the very first component is the Emergency Paid Sick Act. And what that act is actually about is it provides protection for or two weeks of, of leave if I become sick or you become sick, or you are quarantined. So that, that, right now, that law has us paying our employees 100% of their pay to take, you know, to basically care for ourselves. The second piece of that, of the emergency paid sick leave is if I want to stay home and care for my dependent child, or my husband, or spouse, or significant other, it's, the law states that we only have to pay the employee two-thirds. And I'm going to talk to you in a couple of seconds about a recommendation I'll be coming back on May 5 to talk about, though. The second part of it is the Emergency Paid Family Medical Leave. And what that has done, has taken the paid family leave that I had talked about a little bit before. And what it has done is extended that, that leave to 10 weeks, only to care for your child or children if their school or their childcare center has closed. The intricacies on, on that piece is the first two weeks of, of the, the care of the child or, you know, the providing the homeschool, that's unpaid. And then the next 10 weeks is, is paid. But again, that's only, the law's only saying we have to pay them at two-thirds of their salary. Where the uniqueness part of this law is, and it's kind of cumbersome a little bit, is that the, the regulation provides 80 hours of paid time off that I can use either to care for myself, care for my, my dependent at two-thirds of salary, or I can use those 80 hours towards my childcare waiting period. Okay? So it's, there's been a lot of confusion on how you actually do that, but it's, it's 80 hours you get, and you can use it for one of those three functions. Now, with this regulation, if we were to adopt it just as is, it would affect, or it would provide the, the eligibility and this benefit for every employee. So that would mean any employee that has a school-aged child could leave employment for 12 weeks, 10 of it would be paid, and that would really put us in a pickle. So the Department of Labor has given us some exclusions that we could possibly use. And they say you may use. Now, those exclusions are your emergency responders and your healthcare workers. And normally, you would think emergency responders, your, your paramedics, your EMTs, they've actually used a very, very broad definition for emergency responders and for our healthcare workers. So the emergency responders are not only all those individuals that work for our EMS division, but those would also be those that work in the health side of Health and Human Services. There are some positions within the public side of Human Services. Our detention officers, our, our sworn police officers are also included. So it, it does offer, offer us some protection as a county. If, if all our employees decide that they, they need to take that time off, we'd still be able to serve our citizens here in Buncombe County. So I will be coming back to you on May 5 with a recommendation. The two recommendations are this. One is that even though the law says we only have to pay our employees two-thirds, I would like to suggest at the request of the county manager that we pay our employees 100%, not the two-thirds, if they were to stay home to care for their children, or if they were to provide school-aged childcare for their children. And the second is that we adopt whatever the definition is that the Department of Labor is using for exclusions. Now, again, nothing is simple with Department of Labor. Whenever they have a new law, they, they update us constantly on what those definitions are. And so one of the things that I, I need you to be aware of is we're getting guidance almost daily on what positions are excluded and what positions aren't. And so what we will be doing, if, again, at your approval, is we'll be using whatever the Department of Labor is, has in effect at that moment. So if I were to apply for the emergency family leave, I would go to the family or the, the Department of Labor, find out if my position is exempt. If my position is exempt, then on the day that I applied, I would then not be eligible. Where I'm going is that we've had some employees who, when we first got this, this act, it came in effect as of April 1, those positions were not defined as excluded. They are now. And that's not fair to the employees to exclude them now when the law said they were included on the day they applied. Phew. That was a very long, complicated law. Questions I can answer for you?
I do want to make a clarification. When we brought this forward before, we asked for six weeks of paid leave. The, this memo said eight, but we're still at the six weeks of paid leave, county's policy. But this new law from the government is actually two weeks plus 10 weeks. So we want to follow this first and then still talk about our policies because this law is only for coronavirus. But if a person does have a birth of a child or something else that they need paid family medical leave, we don't have a policy in place at this point in time. When we come back in May, we'll be talking about both policies.
Do you have an estimate for how many county employees would be utilizing this?
Because of the exemption, right now, we have 12 employees that have applied. If the exemption was not in place, there's quite a few. I don't have an exact number. I can get it for you, though.
You mean ballpark?
Probably at least half.
Half the county employees?
Would, would qualify for it.
Twelve, right? 12 or 500. I said, we're talking.
We're talking employees, yeah. So you can easily.
Will, will, will not come to work for 10 weeks?
Could potentially not come to work for 10 weeks. We are allowing them to use it intermittently. And so we have some employees that have asked to be able to do halftime. And, but yeah, that could go out for 12 weeks.
So, so this is, you know, of course, completely different in scope than what the county's policy would do under normal circumstances where someone needs to, you know, take time to care for a loved one who's ill. This is, you know, maybe the majority of our workforce? So how, how will the county operate?
Which is why we're asking for the exceptions as well. So that, that would exclude, our first responders could not take this leave. They would have to find a support system, so to speak, to help unless they were sick themselves and had to care for themselves. But we would exclude during this crisis, we would exclude our first responders and our healthcare workers from taking off, to, for 12 weeks, completely take off for 12 weeks.
So what if in, in two weeks, the state says that schools are closed?
Schools are already closed. I'm not sure.
I mean, they're, they're closed for the rest of the year.
So they would have 12 weeks.
Meaning that they don't, they don't have to go to school, excuse me, sorry. That they don't have to, they don't, they don't, they don't have to, they don't have to go and, and take care of the kid young and at school.
So the one thing I can say that I have not seen in any of the updates, Department of Labor is doing a frequently asked question, and I check it every day because they're constantly adding updates. The one thing I haven't seen is that typically if school gets out June 25, that would be the end of the school year. Now, the question is, is there any childcare centers that are open thereafter? So, you know, is the law going to say that those 12 weeks would expire on, let's say, the hypothetical June 25? I don't know that yet. But as long as the schools are closed and the childcare centers are closed, this regulation would still be in effect. And right now, it's in effect through April 1 through December 31 of 2020.
And this would be effective through the summertime when schools would be closed, even if this were not happening?
See, that's, that's the piece I haven't gotten, I haven't gotten any guidance from.
How does this make sense?
If the parents put their child in, in childcare, then there's, you got, the school wouldn't have been in session, but they don't have any childcare. So it may pick up, the law may say, well, if they were going to be putting them in childcare, because mom and dad would have been working, they would then be eligible for this, I would assume.
And do you recall that we did open childcare? One of the first things we did from the EOC was open childcare, that our first responders would have a place to take their children so they could work and serve the community. So that, that is in place now.
And that is something that could potentially continue.
Yes.
Through the summer.
And that is at free of cost for our first responders to do that at this point in time.
But it does only apply to first responders where, again, I'm just, I want to make sure I'm understanding the proposal correctly, that this would be for many, many employees beyond first responders, right? That, that would be covered by this benefit, right? But they, those staff, would they currently be able to utilize the healthcare, I mean, the childcare facilities that?
Yes, for our county employees?
Yeah.
Yes, they could, they can utilize those first responders, childcare facilities that we did open. Because we do have.
For any county employees?
For any county employees. And we do have normal county employees that would not be considered first responders that we have deployed to do work right now. So they are actually still working. They're not at home like some of the other employees that we do have. So those employees are eligible for childcare.
So, so I've, you know, as we've shifted everything around here, you know, we've had to put departments in different ways of working. So I know there's been vast changes already over the last few weeks. But I guess I, I would just like to hear your thoughts at a high level about if this were to be put into place and is covering over half of our workforce or, or something in that neighborhood, then does this raise significant concerns for you about how you want to see the county operating over the next 10 weeks?
So let me be clear. This is already in place. That's a federal rule that's already in place. So right now, all of our.
The pay structure is for us to decide, right?
Correct. The pay structure and the fact that the policy, the federal law says you may exempt employees.
Right.
So because of the "may," we're asking you to be clear and let our employees know who is exempt and who is not. So that's the policy conversation that we're asking for, to get rid of the "may" be exempt. Because we do, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Were you? Okay. So this is my understanding, but if you have a different one, absolutely time in.
I'm agreeing. I agree.
Okay. So that's why we're asking for a definition around who is exempt. So we can tell our employees, I'm sorry, but I do need you to come to work because we have to provide first responders, or we do have to run EOC, or whatever those tasks that we're asking you to do. We need you here. So that's the reason why we're asking for the exempt part. I do believe because of our employees, and we have provided for the rest of the employees, not the first responders and the healthcare workers, but let's call them our civilian employees, I do believe because we have provided for that workforce, that not all of them will be taking this right now because we are paying them already.
That's right.
To do work, whether or not they're answering phones or delivering food. They do have the flexibility right now in their work schedule that I believe that they can do this work and not have to take off and not help provide that service that we're asking for at this point in time.
But if we approve the exemption request and we approve the 100% pay policy, and just feel free to get me, if I'm just getting this wrong, feel free to just tell me I'm getting it wrong. But all of these employees would be able to say, I'm allowed to not do any work for Buncombe County for 10 weeks, and I get paid 100%. So.
Right.
I know we have a very dedicated caring workforce, but a lot of people are going to make the logical decision to say, I'll call you, I'll call you in 10 weeks and we'll check in and see where we're at, right? I mean, they'll be under no obligation to do any work for the county for that period.
If we pay 100% to stay home. Correct.
And so assuming that high percentages of people make the very logical, intelligent decision to utilize that benefit, then are we looking realistically at a situation where a high percentage of the county workforce is simply, you know, is simply not doing any work for the next 10 weeks?
10 weeks.
And does that raise significant concerns in terms of just kind of carrying out core county work? county work?
It would, if they all took off and said, we're taking the 10 weeks of paid and we're going to have a child age, not all of them have child age, so remember there are specific things they have to do, take care of themselves if they're sick. So for us, if they're sick, if it's not COVID, they'll bring us a doctor's note, so they'll have to prove they're sick, or they'll have to have a school age. Not all of the employees will fit into that category.
But I'm still trying to wrap my head around having a school age during the summer when there's no school.
I think because of the childcare, assuming, I mean, if we could say to them, we have available childcare for you, that would exclude their... I'm going to ask Frue for a quick second. When, if I provide, if we say we have free childcare for you, does that, in regards to this regulation, would you say that we're forcing you to go to this childcare center? Does the parent still have the ability to say yes or no and still qualify for this?
I am not sure. I'd have to look into that. I think part of the discussion is that, I think caused some confusion for me, was your reference to half the workforce. Now, I think that half the workforce is roughly half the people that can be excluded. So that doesn't mean that there's half that have school-age children or can prove that they have a COVID-19 relative. So I think it's a smaller number than what you're looking at or envisioning.
Okay.
But exactly to answer your question, I'm not sure.
I can actually pull some reports for you and get exact figures.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Okay. Other questions, commissioners? So this is on the agenda for this evening, right? So we're going to talk more about this this evening?
No, sir, May 5th. So this is a preview now.
Okay, great. So we've got some more time to get all this. Okay.
Just finally, can you either, you may be reiterating, but just walk us through one more time, the law is in effect currently.
Correct.
So could you just walk us through again sort of how we're currently implementing it relative to where we might head?
Currently, absolutely. So right now, I am using the exclusion of that whatever Department of Labor has said is the positions that we will be excluding. And after, you know, having a conversation with the county manager, until the decision is made, we will be paying those employees 100% of their salary, if their decision is no or yes on that.
Last question. So if this law is already into effect now, and we're going to wait till three weeks to come up with the exclusions and the one, is that something that we ought to maybe try to decide before then, in case someone wants to try to take this now? Do you have clear direction as how you would interpret the law right now?
Yes, I do. However, I didn't get it in front of you in time. And so that's my, why I was pushing it out to May 5th. But if you would like me to provide you more clarity, I can.
I think what Sharon is saying is, we didn't have this on the agenda before, so we didn't want to ask you to add it or make a decision tonight. We want to explain it to you, let you see what we're talking about. What we are doing now to implement is not to harm the employee. So the employee, if they apply for it, whatever date they apply, whatever exclusion is in place, we're applying that exclusion and we're paying them 100%. We're not harming the employee. If you should choose to say you want to go to the two-thirds, then that will be going forward. And the employee would then, anyone applying from that date forward would then be applied to the two-thirds pay, if that makes sense. So what we're doing today is not harming the employee and saying, I'm going to cut your pay. What we're doing is keeping you whole. And because I'm paying some people whole, my decision to ask you to continue paying the employee whole will be that. But if you choose to pay two-third pay, whatever day we vote on that going forward, it will be two-thirds pay for all those employees.
So if we pay, okay. So what was in place before was, help me if I'm incorrect, Family Medical Leave Act, right?
Correct.
12 weeks, you can take it off, you get paid nothing, right?
If you have accrued leave on the books, you can use your accrued leave. So if you have PTO, sick leave, vacation leave, you can use that leave and still get your pay. This is saying you don't have to take any leave, you just get your time.
Okay. So now, the federal program is, would be for two-thirds of that time, they would get paid, correct?
Correct.
Instead of...
You can take the day off, but you get two-thirds of your paycheck.
Two-thirds of your paycheck, okay. Instead of, and you wouldn't have to use any of your time, you wouldn't have to what you had to do before.
Correct.
So to me, it's a pretty good deal right now, right? Instead of getting nothing and having to take your time, you're getting two-thirds of your pay.
Correct.
Right? So the proposal is to take that from two-thirds to 100%, is that correct?
Correct.
To keep them at 100%, yes.
Because there's some folks who are already receiving 100%. So moving forward, those who are late to the game would only get two-thirds.
Right, correct.
Makes it a little inequitable there.
But if we, but it depends on what you're comparing it to, I guess. It does. I mean, because before, it was, it was Family Medical Leave Act, which a lot of people, and maybe some people in this room, had already taken, and they didn't receive any benefits. And so it's not a bad deal, you know, wherever it lands, right?
Either way.
I mean, it's not. I mean, I could say it's not, I mean, 100% is much better, but those that's been paid 100%, what county manager's saying is that that would be paid, but if we move forward at 100 or we move forward at 200, then that would not be unfair to any of those people because they're still going to be getting paid more, quite a bit more than on Family Medical Leave Act.
I guess part of what would be helpful to sort of think about this as we move it ahead is just, you know, I understand that we've had to just take such dramatic steps to change the way everything's working right now, and lots of folks are working from home in all these different business sectors, if they're, you know, fortunate enough to be working. And, but we are, you know, hopeful that, you know, better days are ahead in terms of the COVID-19 situation and more, you know, more things are going to be resuming operations, including our own operations, right? So in terms of the way things, it won't be like the way it used to be, but it'll be something like the way it used to be. So I guess it would just be helpful to get additional information, Ms. Pender, about kind of what the management's looking at in terms of sort of different departments resuming more, what we'll call kind of traditional operations in the weeks ahead, because I just want to make sure we're not doing anything that would be contrary to, you know, kind of being able to carry out the core functions that we want to be able to be bringing back online in a safe way. I mean, that's my, that's my kind of core concern. So if we can maybe just hear a bit more about that between now and when we need to make the final decision on this too, that would be, that'd be helpful for me and him. Other questions or comments at this time? Okay. All right. Thanks for the update. Thanks very much. Next up is the FY '21 budget, continuation of discussion of budget planning, and Jennifer Barnett will lead us on this part.
Good afternoon. Thanks, Max. As a continuation from our time together on April the 7th, we would like to provide you with some additional information as it relates to the budget calendar, address questions that came up during our previous meeting, as well as continue the conversation with you about prioritization of the four items that you specified that were previously presented. With today as a follow-up from our initial budget conversation and having received a request from the school systems to extend the deadline and presentation for their fiscal year '21 budgetary requests, we are proposing the following calendar adjustments. You will receive the fiscal year '23 third quarter financial report from Don Warren, Finance Director, at your regular board meeting this evening. At the May 5th pre-meeting, we will provide you with a fiscal year '20 estimated year-end for revenues and expenses, as well as fund balance analysis, while still aiming to hear from any fire district requests on that date. This moves our education partners to pre-meeting on May the 19th. And by shifting their presentations to May the 19th, we would request to extend the county manager's recommended budget presentation to June the 2nd, moving public hearing on the budget to June 16th, with the option for budget adoption on the same date or on a specially called meeting on June 23rd. Any concerns related to that shift in the schedule?
I guess, I guess the concern, you know, we're going to talk about the, you know, the first past budget today, so maybe, maybe as we go through that, this concern will kind of get addressed, but between here and June 2nd, maybe could you just say a little bit more about the May 5th FY '20 estimates? Like, what are the key pieces of information? Is that a report to the commission on that day? Okay, so just maybe, could you say a little bit more about what will happen at that meeting?
Sure. So May the 5th, we actually, so ordinarily, you would hear the third quarter financial report for current fiscal year, and we would provide you with the year-end estimate. So where do we look to end fiscal year '20?
Our ending this year, right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I guess I'll just say, my only concern about the schedule is that, you know, in addition to the conversation we have today about kind of looking ahead to the next year's budget, you know, the next time we'll be deliberating on that based on this schedule will be when we get the proposal on June 2nd. And so I don't know, I just wonder if there's any, if my concern would be like, we're kind of late in the process at that point, and if there's big, you know, big concerns about where it's at, there's not as much time to kind of, you know, move some of the dials at this point. So that's, I'll just kind of raise that. So if there's some ways to get some further updates and maybe just have some more conversations in between, I think that that would be beneficial, especially considering how in some ways, you know, the education piece can be so big, and we always wrestle with this, but that comes in pretty late and it's big numbers. And so we can kind of, we think we're kind of here, and then all of a sudden, we're, it's different. So just, I guess the more communication through the process is, would be helpful. But I don't have a specific change, I'm just kind of airing the idea.
Okay. We can certainly do that. So we wanted to follow up on some of your previous questions. A question posed from Commissioner Belcher was, why did other taxes and licenses decrease? And it was by 1.6 million from fiscal year 2019 actuals to the fiscal year '20 and '21 budget amount. This was related to the sale of mission properties, where the deed stamp excise tax amount was $1.1 million in that fiscal year. We did not include this in the revenue category where we depicted one-time revenues, as that also relates to Chairman Newman's indication that you do have some revenues that could happen in some years but not in others. The historical budget trend to establish fiscal year '20 or '21 budget amount would not have included that, and that's why you would see that the fiscal year '20 and '21 amounts would be lower, because that was 1.1 in fiscal year 2019.
Okay. Thank you.
An additional request was to provide context for requests of emergency services personnel. We are working with a department, and we'll have detailed information for you leading into or up to the recommended budget on any positions that are proposed. So we will continue to work to get, you know, more detail and context for you around any of those requests. Since April 7th, we have continued to work with departments to make adjustments from our first past budget. It's the normal progression of the budget process. However, the upcoming fiscal year presents us with unique challenges, which is not new, new to any of us, and around a significant reduction to the available revenues rather than revenue growth. The items in the following slides were items initially considered in our first past budget. However, most of the items are now proposed to be placed on hold until fiscal year '22 or until if an opportunity arises in fiscal year '21 where revenues are improving, and we could come back to you all with recommendations for any of the list of the prioritized items. In addition to salary and benefits and operating and program support, capital projects and information technology requests have a cost impact to the general fund. Based on a recommendation from the county capital projects review team and a review by the county manager, six projects are proposed to be debt-financed and remain in the budget and include the listed projects. Three of the six listed projects, courthouse repairs, jail repairs, and fleet services complex, would have an estimated fiscal year '21 budget impact of debt issuance cost at approximately $100,000. Debt payments would begin in fiscal year '22. The courthouse repairs are necessary preventative maintenance for water pipes and lock systems for windows. The jail repairs is in need to address safety elements of replacing jail door hardware and sliders, as well as epoxy floor in the showers. The fleet services complex is proposed to relocate the garage from the transfer station, which is anticipated to improve efficiencies, expand capacity to optimize operations, and an opportunity to share space with the solid waste fleet maintenance.
Do we know where that's going, being relocated to?
Right now, we're looking at the old landfill, close to where we're putting the solar farm.
So continuing, the two projects at the top of the slide are for public safety fleet. General Services Director Michael Mace has worked with staff to evaluate the existing fleet based upon the point system that was previously introduced and is recommending the replacement of 24 sheriff vehicles. These include 21 patrol vehicles, one animal control, and two school resource officer vehicles. For emergency services, it was previously recommended for two ambulances and one truck replacement. We've updated the proposed fleet purchase to include one ambulance purchase as the one that was recently approved for purchase in the current fiscal year and one truck For fiscal year '21, we do estimate one-half of an annual debt payment cost for the sheriff and emergency services proposed vehicles, totaling an amount estimated to be $152,000. For the final listed project, we have evaluated that savings from a previous debt finance project should be eligible to be repurposed towards the Lester Crossing build-out. The county manager has recommended to the sheriff that an evaluation of Lester Crossing site, in consideration of the overall needs for the sheriff operations, would be helpful. And if the site is found appropriate for the needs, a design phase as the first step toward this project request. We will bring this item to the board in the future, once we know an estimate for what the initial scope and cost would be.
Yeah. Can we find out, you know, more specifics on what that's going to be? I mean, are they wanting to, are they wanting to, you know, stage more cars over there? I mean, what are they wanting to do at the...
So there is a description that was included in the packet that was sent to you all via the email, but that is an opportunity for the ability to address some of their property and evidence storage, and I'm trying to, and I can't remember the other few items off the top of my head, but I can definitely get back to give you more details.
This is the Lester?
Yes.
But we've also asked the sheriff to take a look at a design and what it is that he's trying to accomplish with that site. So we do have funds available because of repurpose debt funds, but before we spend that, we needed the full design to get an idea what it is he's asking us to build over there.
Yeah, because, I mean, my mind went, you know, to, is that where it needs to be or does it need to be somewhere else? Or what's the, you know, the long-term plans on that? Or is there a need for another space somewhere else? I don't know. I mean...
And I think those are definitely the questions that we would be looking for out of, out of a study.
Okay.
So these are the debt finance projects that are proposed. If there's not any questions, we'll move on to our pay-as-you-go. So this is our other category of capital projects. The team and the county manager were previously recommending the four prioritized listed projects that are at the top of the list. The current recommendation is to place these items on hold for fiscal year '21, again with an opportunity to bring them back to the board if the revenues do improve. Two greenways funding allocations totaling $334,000 remain, based on our current commitments to an installment county contribution toward the INCA Destination Project and a final year commitment to the Black Mountain Greenway. Additional funding towards the Woodfin Greenway design is currently considered, being considered as a... Additional funding towards the Woodfin Greenway design is currently consider, being considered by the MPO. If that funding is made available, we are recommending that the 457,800 dollars not be funded in the general fund. And that is not currently, um, in the budget. And I, if you'll remember, Parks and Rec Director Josh O'Connor brought that item. Spent several months and said, going into Woodfin design, he would potentially need the 457,800. So that is in consideration by the MPO.
And that just, I think we have a, I think that's the meeting next week. Is that, that's a pretty near-term decision, I believe, right?
I, I do think that they were hoping for May.
Right.
So the three-phase power to sports park, would that not, is that not part of the, um. The big expansion of the sports park? Would that not be included in that?
So as I under. So as I spoke with Josh O'Connor yesterday, um, so this particular, um, 100,000 dollars. Is not eligible for the grant funding portion. Apparently, it was determined after that there was a need for some additional power to be supplied. So this is in addition and was post-grant award. So we are in discussion with general services and Parks and Recreation around what could be available funding. That might be savings from another project that we could repurpose to that particular item. So. That was our discussion yesterday.
My, my only, my only concern with that would be that you, we've had in the past conversations about the. The expansion of the sports parks, uh, the, the greenways and, you know, we have voted for a lot of. A lot of those. And, um, if a hundred thousand dollars is holding up the start of that. You know, I'm not too excited about, you know, continuing to delay some of these, these projects. I mean, I'd like to see, I'd like to see one of them, you know, jumped on and go on and, and right now is not a bad time to be doing some of this.
So there is a current project that is approved in the capital fund for soccer, the soccer complex improvements. And as that was presented to you all and you approved it, it was specific for sidewalks and some driveway improvements. With the conversation with our general services director yesterday. He would propose and needs for that order of operations to be changed. So this additional phase of power would need to go first. And so our discussion yesterday was, could we bring that project back to you all? Ask for this to be funded in lieu of that order of operations? So that we could move forward with this piece? So that, that has been our conversation yesterday and would look to bring that back, um, to you all.
Yeah, the reason it jumped off the page, I mean, I just remember when we were building our church, we had to get three-phase power and. I mean, you had, you didn't do that, you wasn't doing anything. So, you know, so anyhow, y'all can bring that back.
Okay.
Information on it.
Great, thank you. The projects outlined on this slide are for solid waste projects. A reminder that solid waste is an enterprise fund, so this is separate from the general fund, but wanted to definitely bring these to your attention. So with it being an enterprise fund, it means that the expenditures are anticipated to be covered with the revenues generated as a result of their operations. There are a total of six projects proposed as pay-go funding in the amount of 930,000 dollars. For the landfill gas utilization study. The purchase power agreement with Duke Energy is set to expire November 2021. The purpose of the utilization study is to evaluate viable long-term options for landfill biogas uses. The landfill engineering cell seven design and permitting is an initial phase for the cell seven. That ensures that we are prepared in a sufficient amount of time to use the next phase of the landfill when needed. You'll see 125,000 dollars for a white goods backup loader. We plan for this to be paid from their restricted fund balance. Those dollars are specifically earmarked from white goods revenue earnings. This is a, um, a requirement by the state regulations. So white goods revenue generates earnings, they have a restricted fund balance. We plan to pay for this particular piece of equipment from that restricted fund balance.
Jennifer, I have one question, could you go back to the previous slide for just one moment? On the Woodfin project, so hopefully the MPO can fund that, I'll do my best to support it. But if it doesn't get funded there for, for whatever reason. So, so I mean, obviously, I'm, I'm, it's a great project, I'm very supportive of it. There's a lot of different funding sources going into that project. Part of which is the, the, you know, town of Woodfin passed a bond for the project. Are any of their funds being involved in the planning phase of the project?
This was only the planning for the Greenway.
Right.
But I don't know if that, they were planning to use any design money for the Greenway, but we can follow up on that.
You know, and I'm certainly not against the county, we've invested in it, I'm supportive of it. But it is, it is a kind of a partnership project, right? So I guess I'm just raising it as an idea, like if we can't get the MPO to fund it, maybe it could be, maybe Woodfin can help with, at least in part, with, with some of that. Cause it's, so it's not, it's not 100% on our shoulders, yeah. It's just.
You will follow up with that?
All right.
Okay. So just noting that the other, um, pieces of our equipment here for solid waste. Are either at the end of their useful li-, useful life or the cost benefit analysis of, of the maintenance being required. Suggests that they need to be replaced. The, so these projects are forecasted to be paid from revenues generated in fiscal year 21. And the fund continues to be on track, um, to be able to do so. Similar to capital projects review team, information technology governance committee was established for the first time this fiscal year. To receive and recommend information technology requests for the annual budget cycle. The committee reviewed projects with an applied scoring criteria and had recommended 10 projects for fiscal year 21. Further review and adjustments include placing six of the 10 projects on hold for fiscal year 21 budget. While recommending that four move forward. Those four include, um, the GRC tool and the security rating tool. Which are considered critical to further the integrity and cybersecurity of our information technology systems. The mountain mobility onboard camera system is at the end of its useful life. And is eligible for approximately 148,580 dollars of grant funding. Requiring a 16,500 dollar county match. Just appraised software is anticipated to improve the efficiency in deed review and transfer process between the tax assessment. And register of deeds records. And funding is available in the reappraisal reserve fund to cover it. Any questions for those? So having re-, reviewed new costs that drive expenditures in this budget, we wanted to additionally review other important areas of the budget. That have continued funding. Affordable housing remains flat to fiscal year 20 at 2.3 million. Early childhood education comprises a total amount of 3,672,000 in the budget. A 2% inflationary amount of 72,000 is added in fiscal year 21. Over a total funding amount committed for already established programming. As well as some opportunities for early childhood, new early childhood funding. Economic development incentives are budgeted based on the existing commitments at 1.3 million dollars. A reminder that, um, generally, the larger amount of that budget is Lennimar. But if we, if Lennimar did achieve their benchmarks. A reminder that Lennimar funding currently totaling 3 million dollars is set aside in the multi-year fund. So that's not taken into account in this portion of the budget. Strategic partnership grant funding totals 889,305 dollars. The, there's 258,500 dollars that have been reallocated from other areas of the general fund budget. And have been now made available as strategic partnership application opportunities. Education includes AB tech, Buncombe County Schools and Asheville City Schools and is flat. At the current time in the fiscal year 20 budget totaling 87.7 million dollars. We discussed cost of living briefly last time, but the cost of living that was effective per the personnel ordinance on April 1st of this year. Is included in the fiscal year 21 budget. The cost of living adjustment that would be considered effective at the end of next fiscal year does not get budgeted. So those are dollars that, that if there is, um, a cost of living provided, that that would be absorbed with lapsed salaries. So just want to make sure that you understand that we don't budget for that second portion or the last three months of the quarter. If that, if that was something that was provided.
Could you, I'm, could, when you say it was, it's paid for by lapsed salaries, what does that, what does that mean exactly?
So, so the 2.31% that was effective this fiscal year, obviously, we have to roll that into. Because it becomes part of your salary and wage buzzet, budget for fiscal year 21. So that, that was already provided. So for the April, May and June period, rather than building dollars into the budget. Yes, the expenditures continue to hit your budget line, however, it is lapsed salary that covers it. So when we have vacancies, so vacancies yield savings. So, um, just like our early retirement incentives in the several previous fiscal years. We've not brought those into the budgeted dollars. But because you have unspent salary dollars for vacancies, you're then able to pay.
I see, I see what you're saying, but doesn't it cost money to county, just like anything else does? I mean, it's just, it just costs, it hits the budget in the exact same way everything else we do.
It does.
We're just kind of saying, here's this, here's this, you know, look, not every position ends up being filled or positions become vacant. That just always happens through the course of the year. But it, it has the, the exact same effects on our budget as anything else, right?
There would absolutely.
Wonder, when we say that, it makes it sound like, oh, it's just, it just, there's this money that, that's there to do that. But if that money could be there to pay for, for anything we're doing, right?
Right, and, and, and we do use the opportunity for that. So in our, in our, um, first pass of the budget, um, early retirement incentive costs are 1.3 million dollars. So first pass, we budget those until we can get an idea and start doing some sort of projection around position budgeting. So will we have an opportunity, what will, you know, potential vacancies be? So going into an, another pass of our budget, we reduced the position budget by 1.3 million dollars. So instead of building that into the budget. We are then planning to use the savings from lapsed, from those lapsed salaries to cover early retirement incentive dollars of, of 1.3 million.
So I would, I would agree with the, uh, chairman's point. At the same time, keeping all of these salary conversations together. I mean, that is, that is real, that we have some savings in salaries, in pay. And it does, it does, if we choose for it to cover that, it covers that or it would cover, I mean, it's, it's savings. But we are, we are, um, there is a 2.31% cost associated with that. But we have, uh, I mean, it's like, it's like companies paying for their 401Ks, it's the same thing. I mean, there's some, uh, there's, there's savings when, you know, when people leave and different things, but.
Agreed, and we do disclose.
Get some detail on it.
That lapsed salary, we call it, or, or is attrition due to attrition that there's savings, money that you're not gonna spend on salaries? So we do use that, but I do want to clarify, because last year when we talked about the cost of living, we didn't address it. It is a part of the, of the personnel ordinance, so we have to take action not to do that now?
I understand, I understand, we, we, we had a very robust discussion about that with Mr. Wood when he was here. And, you know, and I, 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 and I'm, and I feel, I was on the side that said, let's, let's have a policy of providing this. So I've tried to be real supportive of it. We are in a really unique period, so I'm just, I'm just raising it as a question. You know, we're an organization of people and this is, this is, that's, it's the biggest driver in our budget. So I just, I just want us to talk it through and kind of, kind of think about it. I mean, as per our policy, the current policy is that it is whatever inflation is, right? So we are in a, we are in a unique environment, we're probably in a deflationary period right now, right? I mean, if we, if we went out and checked right now, we might be negative. I mean, oil is less than a dollar a barrel, right? I mean, so this is, this is different. We don't know where we're gonna be next April. It's probably gonna be a, I mean, realistically, it's probably gonna be a lower number than what we've been seeing in recent years. But we just, very challenging to forecast where that might land if we just sort of stick with, you know, the, the policy we have in place right now, right?
Correct, and one option you could do is to line it up with your budget instead of April. It could be a July, so you can look at it in a holistic approach. Right now, it's in April. So there are things that we can do to look at that, but until you open and said, go ahead and take a look at it, right now, it's sitting over there.
Can you remind us of the rationale for it being in April?
It is, right now, you look at the December cost of living for the year prior in December, and then you paid in first quarter. So I, I don't know if there's a rationale, we'll actually play it in April, April 1, or the beginning of that second quarter. I don't know if there was another rationale other than April.
Thank you. So just playing that out, if that was something we were to explore, um, one option would be to set it at a different level. Another option would be that it, some employees would be eligible for it? Or is this something that would have to be offered to every employee if it were offered at all?
It's a cost of living across the board adjustment right now, I'm looking at for.
Absolutely.
I think, I think if you're gonna do anything, you would have to say the lower paid, you can't give something more to higher paid employees than the lower paid.
Well, that's what I was envisioning, but like if, but I was curi-, some things, if we do them, they have to apply to everyone. And then there are other things that we can, I think, do segment. So if we wanted to say the folks in the, um, lowest earning quartile, for instance, of county employees would get a cola. But it would be frozen for one year for, I mean, just, again, I'm not proposing any of these things right now, but just kind of starting to understand the options that may be available to us.
I think the flexibility would come into play if it's not a part of your ordinance. Right now, that's your local law, so it kind of applies, if you pull it out of your local ordinance and talk about that, then yes.
Okay. And maybe we could get just clarity on whether this is one of those points that if we do it for one person, it ha-, it happens for everyone? Or if this is one of those things where certain segments of employees could receive it one year and others not?
Well, I certainly, I certainly hope we can do, you just keep the policy. I guess for myself, I just, as we get deeper into the budget and we see, you know, what different choices need to be made. You know, maybe we need to revisit it, maybe we'll be, maybe we'll be fine to just kind of keep, keep the policy as we would default to. All right, thanks Jennifer, all right, what's next?
Sure.
Al.
So from the initial.
You're gonna have to switch from gray to red for this old fellow.
Well, we grade those out because these were on your original list. And what we're highlighting in green are the four.
I get it, you're just not, we just can't see them, so if you wanted them to disappear, you did really good.
Okay. It was definitely meant to draw your attention to the four that, that, we're hoping to receive direction from you all on today.
Okay.
So those four are going to be the ADA complimentary para-transit. Playground funding for some specific schools, expanded visitation for the detention center and phase one solar projects on county buildings.
So I just got a quick comment on the elementary schools. It dropped to, not the elementary, excuse me, intermediate and elementary, it dropped to, um, 60, oh, you got it? Never mind.
All right. So if, if we can go ahead, we will start with the ADA complimentary para-transit. So the subsidy for the city of Asheville portion of ADA para-transit. During budget development, transportation staff had indicated a likelihood that the cost of the operational contract would increase. With an increase to the operational expenses, the city of Asheville was originally estimated to pay an additional 395,000 dollars. As the share of the increased cost in our first pass budget. Since that time, a request for proposals went out and the mountain mobility operational contract is currently under review for bid proposals. Additionally, since that time, an updated cost estimate for costs on a service mile basis. Has come in lower than initially thought. Using the, um, existing cost estimate rate, the shared cost to the city would be estimated currently at 104,000 dollars. With the proposals still out for review and consideration, there is a possibility that the negotiated rate could decrease. Therefore yielding no increased cost to the city. So that, that process is still underway. And so what we would be seeking direction from you all today for is that if there is an increased cost for operations. As to whether we hold the city harmless or whether we absorb that amount in the general fund. And so right now, based on the established cost estimate for costs on service mile basis, that estimate. that estimate would be a $104,000 increase to the city contract, or our general fund would absorb that.
Well, that's a bit of good news in a time when we have not had a lot, so thank you for that. You know, I, I guess I would, and it's a much, a much, much more manageable number, whoever's flipping the bill for it now than what it might have been. Let's throw my two cents on it. You know, this is, this is another one of those partnership kind of projects, you know, we're providing the services, we provide it outside the city limits, we also do it in the city limits, city puts money in to reimburse. I don't know. I mean, part of it is, you know, I kind of see this as an area where we need more partnerships in the future. Maybe just kind of in the spirit of that, I, you know, I might suggest we do something where if there's some additional costs, we, you know, maybe we share them, we share them equally between the two organizations or something, something like that.
Well, we're currently subsidizing so, at that. And we're, so the question would be, do we maintain that rate at $1.92, or do we let them pay? They weren't expecting an increase of the 395 in their budget, so this is good news for them as well, because they don't have to pay the 395. So the question would be, does the county fund them an additional $104,000? Do we split that in half? Is there any cost here on that 104? Or do we pass that on to them 100% and keep them at the 192 rate?
Yeah, so, so my suggestion would be we pass on half of the additional cost.
Which is 52?
Just to say, you know, one idea. Any other kind of initial thoughts? I mean, this will all ultimately be in the budget.
Yes.
Whatever we're talking about today, everyone has the right to come back and say, you know, I've thought about this more, and here's where I'm at on this. So this is just sort of a preliminary discussion if folks have any initial feedback. We're not going to make a motion and vote on this, but that's, you're just looking for conversation around this, right?
Because right now, nothing is in the budget. The 104 is not in our budget right now, so we would need to put 52, or, so that's why we're asking for some guidance today. So if, oh, if you want to.
I mean, I don't have any strong feelings against it. So I, I mean, my, my position with the, with the routes has been, you know, can we, can we find, serve other areas like we did when we funded Lester? I mean, that's kind of when I think about, you know, partnership with the city, that's where my mind goes. You know, this amount is certainly doable, so.
So the one, the one item that was brought forward last time was the Reynolds route. That has been something that that community has been asking about, was the route to the Reynolds community. That was on the slide. I just know grayed out that nobody can see.
I don't know, I don't know if that makes you feel better about the fact that if you liked it, it's gone. I don't know, but it's, you can't see them. That's really bad.
That one did not get any takers last time, so that's why we didn't research and bring any further information on that.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I don't know what level we. I would like to hear more about that. I'm not necessarily saying that we, it bumped something else in there, but we've had, we've talked about that for a long time. And I don't know if it was just originally, you know, and this, this is a little bit, it can be a little bit confusing because it says, you know, commissioner prioritization and this, and there's one thing on there that I'm pretty, pretty strong about it. It's not because it's, it's a priority of mine, a little bit is, but it came from the community. I mean, the community came and said, came to me and said, hey, this is a need, and here's why, here's why we have it, and we've heard from Reynolds for a long time.
So the part, the word prioritization for us was meaning ranking? Which ones did you want us to bring forward and actually fund this year?
Okay, I got that.
Given the constraints? Not that that was a part of any one specific commissioner, but did we bring forward?
That helped, thank you. So what was your amount on Reynolds? I can't see it, sorry.
155.
Okay.
With the, I'm sorry, 155 in year one, and then 51,000 in year after.
And what specifically did that do?
That would buy us, and Matt is here that you can jump in, but that would buy us a vehicle to actually run and some personnel. I think it was a mountain mobility deviated route for this one.
Correct, so the funding would be for the county to include an additional route under our mountain mobility operating contract. This cost, that initial upfront cost would be purchase of a vehicle without any grant funding support because we hadn't sought that. We actually apply for grant funding 12 to 18 months ahead of when we would be able to spend it. So we'd be buying that directly at full cost to the county, and then the operating contract cost rates combined in that first year. The, the concern and the reason Steph hadn't pushed that forward, you know, initially, is that by purchasing the vehicle without grant funding, replacing the vehicle with grant funding in future years would also not necessarily be available. So it would be kind of an ongoing, full 100% capital investment by the county. But again, that's just informational in terms of kind of that ongoing cost. And the reason for the drop would be there's that initial upfront investment of capital with the vehicle, camera equipment, radio, everything necessary to get that additional vehicle in service.
So can you apply for grant funding without it being a, a line item in the budget?
So we include.
Start work on, I mean.
We actually would come back to you, so for example, if, if the route was to be pursued for fiscal year 2022, not 21, we actually would come back to you in the fall of 21 and request the ability through our regular processes, we come to the board and ask for the ability to apply for grant funds. So we could take that action in the fall of this year to, to align that grant funding for use in 2022 for capital procurement as well.
So we'll just be pushing it back from 20 to 22. That would be the difference.
But we would, it'd be part of a conversation, and it would be, we'd be applying for grants, and we'd be bringing that information back to us, right? It's not like we're, you know, I don't like this term, but it's, I'm going to use it. It's not like we're kicking the can down, down the road. We're, I mean, we're really not. We'd be working on it instead of it being just a thought.
And at that point.
Am I thinking right, or?
Correct, so we would be establishing also kind of a recurring source of revenue for that capital investment, which might be beneficial, you know, if we're going to continue to pursue that route for multiple years. The other piece of information that we would have, you know, at that time, would be our new contract rates. We would have more fixed costs. We'd be able to give you a more defined, you know, per year expenditure, and also flesh out more specifics on the routing, how frequently we would want that to run. This analysis was based off of kind of how often we run our existing routes. Does that make sense for the Reynolds community? Those would be conversations we could explore a little bit further if we were, you know, pursuing grant funds and looking at designing that route more specifically through this board.
The amount that county spends on our other Trailblazer routes for like Inca and Black Mountain, those, those cost the county quite a bit more than $50,000 a year as ongoing operating costs. Is that correct?
Correct, so the issue with this route design is that it's a very short route, and we pay by service mile, and so the cost to operate the Inca Handler route, which goes from Goodwill on Patton Avenue all the way to Haywood County and back, is much more expensive than this route is just based on our contract design. And so again, there's some things to think about in terms of frequency of route, the route design, that may modify some of those costs and potentially increase them over time.
So even if the route's shorter, though, I mean, wouldn't if you bought this bus, are you envisioning that it would be driving all day or having more limited hours? Or just all those details have, would be to be determined?
It's a really unique situation. All of our existing routes have what's referred to as an hour headway, so we're running that vehicle for an hour each run. That service takes roughly 55 to 58 minutes to return back to the starting point and runs the next loop. In this route design, you would want to have that recurring frequency for use of the citizen, but there would be significant downtime. So the vehicle would run potentially 20 to 30 minutes and then be sitting for 30 minutes and then run again so that you have that recurring service. So it's a really different design just because it's such a small service area. And again, that's why that cost would be significantly less. We do currently utilize grant funding for the operating expenditures for all the other routes as well, so that's an offsetting cost. And we do have some analysis initially. As you mentioned, as a fixed cost for the service, it is, these other routes would be more expensive. But if you look at it on a per rider expense, we would project this would be much higher cost per rider because the volumes would be significantly lower. So there's a lot of different ways to look at the expenditure, but certainly things that we could bring forward for further discussion.
And this was the second project on the kind of tick list of this, where we're contemplating different ways to sort of expand service and access. We did the first one as Lester, and then this was number two in the list.
Correct, and this comes out of the.
It's been around for a while.
Oh, sure, yeah, I just was wanting, just wanting to.
And then the current transit master plan from the city of Asheville, so their plan, they did indicate costs. The cost for the city would be significantly higher than the costing we are showing because they pay on a revenue hour basis. They employ larger vehicles, they have CDL licensed drivers to operate that. So their expenses would be much more significant than if the county were to operate it in-house. It would potentially require also operating contract amendment. So if we're going to add, you know, a bulk of miles, that may require some adjustments to an operating contract that would be in place at the time as well. So those are all things that we could consider more fully.
So I know we're spending a fair amount of time on this, but you know, we never know what's going to get, get the attention of the, of us up here. The, but again, understanding there's not a detailed plan that, you know, it'd still be kind of a work in progress if we were moving this ahead, but, I mean, in a way, the idea of like, so we would, we might, because we pay based on a revenue per, per mile, you know, kind of compensation contract, we really might buy a bus and have a contract, but then the bus would drive around for a half an hour and then sit there for a half an hour, and we would do that so that we don't have to pay to drive more miles. I mean, it just, I mean, I realize maybe that makes rational financial sense for the county to do it, but it seems like if you bought a bus and there's someone being paid to drive a bus, that then just having it kind of parked for a half hour seems really inefficient.
Sure.
So is that really how it might work, though, just based on the way these, these contracts are set up?
So our, our contractor is obviously going to want to be as efficient as they can. They're paying that operator whether that operator is driving the vehicle or not. We're only reimbursing them for the mileage that they're operating. And so, for example, when we have breaks on our Trailblazer service routes that are existing now, they actually deploy that vehicle and the operator to move other passengers during the downtime of those routes. Now, those are often one or two hour breaks, the way that those routes are designed. So a 30-minute break in that particular area may provide them an opportunity to perhaps perform an ADA para transit trip, but they're very likely to try to utilize that vehicle. We would also want to consider exactly what vehicle we would want to purchase, because typically, a Trailblazer vehicle is a heavier duty, larger vehicle than what we would deploy to send to a customer residence. So we may look at what kind of vehicle we would realistically want to use for a service where they may deploy that vehicle to do other things in the break in between. So there are a lot of considerations here. These were kind of initial estimates of costs to procure a vehicle similar to what we have for Trailblazer service and to operate it, the similar number of runs based on those, those mileages.
Okay, thanks.
The one thing we can talk about then is if it's not going to make it to the budget, will we look to apply for a grant in the fall and bring that back to you so that we can then talk to the community about in 2022, we will look to deploy a route? So that's something that we can talk about if it doesn't make it into this budget for 2021.
It'd be good to hear that information later. I just, I just brought it up because it's, it's been around a while, and I just want to get some detail, detail on it, but, you know, that's probably not for me.
I would, I would, you know, at minimum, be really interested in, in having, you know, putting it on the agenda kind of for, for kind of to prepare for more in-depth discussion about it. I'm definitely supportive of trying to do, trying to do more, and I've definitely heard, hear from people in the community who are supportive of it, you know, like, as, as I'm sure we all do. The, you know, one of the things, though, that makes this challenging, as I've thought about, you know, is this something to really try to go to bat on as strong as possible, is that when we look at the ridership levels on the Trailblazer routes, and, you know, the, like, the fixed routes that Asheville runs, you know, within the city limits, it's, like, the cost per rider is so, so different, right? I mean, like, it's a very expensive service to provide.
Yes.
With the ridership levels being so low. This area has, you know, significantly lower population density than Weaverville, Black Mountain, Inca, the places we already provide a similar service. I mean, so I think realistically, it's going to be even higher. So I, I want the county to do more to support community transit. Whatever amount of additional funding we have to provide, you know, we need to provide it in a place where it does the most good, right? Gets the, provides the most benefit to the community. So there's a case to be made here because this, right now, this is an area that doesn't really have any service. But I, I just think we would need to carefully weigh those, those kind of decisions because it would be on a per rider basis predictably a very expensive service to provide. If we did do it, maybe we do it as like a pilot project or something to kind of check it out. Maybe we'd be pleasantly surprised by the utilization, but I think, I would be very hesitant to make a long-term commitment to it until we have kind of more of that kind of data and information. Those are just a few of my thoughts about, about it. All right, Jennifer.
Chairman, I want to check in in the interest of time. So are you all okay to continue, or? We'll try to get through these three quickly then.
Sure.
So this is where Commissioner Belcher was jumping to, and our understanding is that the school systems are not able to prioritize playgrounds at intermediate schools, and that principals and staff PTOs are working towards raising funds to add a playground at each intermediate school. We understand, Commissioner Belcher, you've been able to have a conversation with the intermediate school principals. And using the cost estimate that we, that we had available for Inca Intermediate for an estimated total cost of 27,548, they've been able to raise some money. And so indicating a county match or a contribution of 15,000 for each of those intermediate schools.
Right.
And then with the known of Pisgah Elementary, there was a request for a grant match of $2,500.
Yes.
And then a placeholder, what we know is that there was an individual who either worked at or was associated with Johnston Elementary who came and ma, and made public comment and made a request for needs at Johnston Elementary.
Right.
We have a placeholder amount. We don't have an identified amount for Johnston, but based on these assumptions, a total request would equate to $65,000 in this particular item.
So I'll just comment on that briefly. I'm on the school capital commission fund with chairman, and we've had this discussion before. I didn't know, I mean, we built the intermediate school, and we built the Inca Intermediate School. I didn't know they, that they, that a playground was not part of it. And, but anyhow, if you talk to the principals, I think they sent a couple of emails, they are, they are major advocates for having this. And I think particularly with the, the benefit that when school goes back with the, you know, the mental, mental and physical well-being of, of the kids, I think it's, it's very needed, and it's amazing how much money they raise. But typically, the cost is $30,000, and then, you know, when, when I first heard about this, the thought was if we could, if we could help with half of that, that would make a big difference for the, for the, for the PTO. And we have to remember that when they're, they, most of the money that the PTO raises, they raise from the parents, and which have, which have, you know, enough of a bind on them now. But I did not talk to, every principal was, you know, they, they, they're, they need it, they need additional swings, they need additional, there's just additional things that they need, and, and this would make a big difference, so.
So we'll move on to the next item.
Before you move on to that, I would share that the school district themselves has not prioritized these, and they said if there was money to be had, they will prefer to use them for salaries and other costs at the school, the systems level. So just want to put that out there, that that was their take on not providing these playground equipment.
So let me, let me make a comment, comment on that. In talking to one of the principals, it is true that if there was a list of capital needs, that a playground would fall at like maybe number, number 27 was actually the number that was given to me, and so they would never get to it. So it's one of those things that, you know, if you got to fix a leak on the roof, or you got to replace a roof, or you got to, there's so many needs, and Chairman Newman knows this, there's so, such a list of things that's needed. This just falls in a hole where they say that, you know, we'll, we'll let the PTOs handle that. So I'm not sure where that comes from, if that comes from, you know, when you're talking about coming from the school system, but I can tell you coming from the, the principals and coming from the community, they, they, it's definitely a priority, so.
So why don't we, you know, I suggest we just kind of keep it in, keep it in. So why don't we, you know, um, I suggest we just kind of keep it in, keep it in here. I think we're going to have plenty of tough choices down the road. And this, you know, this will be on a list of things that we can always come back and talk more about. Once we have, once we have the school's complete budget request, we'll kind of have a sense for how much we need to wrestle with different details like this. I'd love, I would like to do it if we can. I mean, it would bring, it'd bring a lot of joy.
Oh, my gosh.
For a lot of money, so.
If you ever, I'll tell you, and here's, here's some of the things they said.
And we do need to keep, we need to keep moving.
Then I'll, then I'll hush because I could be on this for a long time.
I know, I know.
All right, we'll move on.
So for the next item, Commissioner Beach Farrarrah had specified keeping the expansion of the detention center visitation for consideration. Our conversation with the sheriff's office has been that in order to offer the expanded visitation, it would require one additional detention center position with a cost estimate of seventy-five thousand dollars. And you can see the current state of the visitation and then the proposed state about what that additionally would be, be able to, to offer.
And just a little bit more context again, sort of learned about this really through being on the J-RAC committee. And I don't know the history, but, um, the reality currently is that Buncombe County is unusual in not providing in-person visitation to inmates. And that most of the folks at the Buncombe County Detention Center are there in a pre-trial capacity, meaning they haven't yet had a trial, they haven't either been acquitted or convicted. Many of folks are there because they can't meet a bond requirement, or secure bond requirement. So that's a little bit of the context around it. And in many ways, being able to provide in-person visitation, meaning someone could see their family in person while they were in detention, would kind of bring Buncombe into line with really sort of what's considered kind of a basic threshold of, a basic standard, I should say. So that's just a little bit more context on that.
And does anybody have any other data on that question? I've just, is, the way we do this, is it fairly unusual? I mean, I, I just, I've, I've heard, I've, you've heard what Jasmine just relayed, but do we have any kind of data on? In most counties in North Carolina, can a person go and visit a family member and see them? Or are they mostly talking through screens like this?
They do talk through screens, but they can do face-to-face through that bar. But we'll, we'll get the data that was shared with J-RAC around this. I'm looking at DK because she will pull that data with Tiffany. But in, in most North Carolina counties, the parents can come and see their relatives without having to pay a cost or schedule time with video. They can come and sit across the table and talk to their loved ones.
To maybe treat that item the same as previous?
Okay, so.
I want to hear where other folks land. I mean, um, this is something I would advocate for if we're in a position to be doing additional steps. But certainly want to hear other people's thoughts either now or at a later date. And I will also try to see if I can dig up any of the data that was shared with me around it.
I would also be curious, looking at the extended visitation hours, is, is that on par with other counties as well? Do we offer more or less, um, visitation than other counties? What, what brings us into line?
I mean, again, we're going to play hard decisions. So I don't think we can guarantee any of the things we're talking about today that are getting some favorable, you know, comments. I don't think there's, that it means that they're a lock by any means. Seems like a very humane thing to enable, to me.
Yeah, I think what you're, what you're hearing is, Ms. Farrarrah knows more about this than I would. You know, we're just asking for clarification before we can actually push a button on so many things. I mean, I know more, you know, about the other ones. I can talk about them now. So.
I feel like I'm gonna sound like Jerry Rice a little bit. Can you speak into the mic?
That was very good. Thank you very much. I can. Yes, ma'am, I can. Is that better? Let me get closer to the mic. Yeah, that's for Jerry.
Let's, let's keep moving on. And, um, I mean, again, this is, this is likely a process of unfortunately paring down, right? So, I mean, I don't hear anyone making a strong case that it gets the ax today. But it doesn't mean it's, you know, it doesn't mean that anything's getting approved yet either.
So the last item, Chairman Newman expressed the desire to maintain the solar project on county buildings for consideration in the fiscal year twenty-one budget. The phase one project cost provided by the Sustainability Office is two point nine million. Phase one solar panels can be purchased via Pago or debt financed. For a cash purchase, the two point nine million dollars is reduced by rebates and incentives, which are estimated to be five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for either scenario, reducing the cash amount to two point three million in year one. The point at which you have a positive cash flow or your break even would be nineteen point six years. For debt financing, the same initial two point three million dollar cost at an estimated three percent interest amortized over twenty years yields a total cost of three point nine million dollars. The maximum allowable period to finance per policy is twenty years. The estimated break even point is twenty-six years. In either scenario, the estimated electric bill savings over thirty years is four point seven million dollars. If the decision is to move forward on the project, county staff would recommend debt financing due to a lower annual cost for fiscal year twenty-one.
And what would be the annual? And again, of course, this is in the context of we're doing an RFP, so we don't know what the numbers are. These are all just kind of forecasted numbers. But, um, using this scenario, if we did debt financing, what's the debt service level, uh, the annual debt service level?
If you'll give me one minute, I'll make sure Rusty's looking at it right now.
One hundred ninety-four thousand, six thirty.
Okay, so.
One ninety-four, six thirty.
One ninety-four. So I'll say I'm certainly supportive of the idea of, you know, this, paying for this with cash upfront. I think, you know, probably never personally made sense to me as a way to do this. But certainly in the current year, where you don't have that kind of money to pay for it upfront. But considering it as a debt financing option, I think, um, makes a lot of sense. You know, again, I'm, I'm going to express my optimism that the RFP process is going to come back and show that the, because, because we're paying to have the lights on right now, right? So unlike playgrounds and other things that are great to invest in, but they don't pay for themselves. You, you buy them because they provide good.
Sure, they do.
We actually, not, not in a literal cash, you know, kind of cash sense. But we have to pay the light bills already, we have to pay the heating and cooling bills already, and it's millions of dollars a year. So I remain, I remain optimistic that once this RFP is all said and done, what we're paying for debt service on solar for public buildings will likely pay for itself or even net save money compared to just, you know, business as usual, paying Duke Energy for retail power pricing. So, so I would, I'd support the staff recommendation to take the cash up, cash upfront capital plan out of the budget as a scenario, because I don't think that's going to be feasible. But to remain open to the debt financing scenario, which of course, this will all come back to the county once we have the RFP results to, you know, to discuss further.
So Chairman Newman, certainly the, the, the expert, you know, on this. I'm not, my concern when I look at some of the, is the payback, you know, the nineteen years. Do we have, do you, do we have to, um, are they going to last that long? Do we have to, are we going to issue another sequence of debt? And, uh, you know, are we actually saving money? And that's a, that's a simple question, it's a math question, it's not a support or not support, that's, that's.
So I think the, the short answer's on it, and Jeremiah's here, he can certainly come up and weigh in on this. The technology itself is expected to last thirty to thirty-five or more years. So this, this is debt financing it for twenty years. And I think the, um, so the, we'll get the benefits of it way beyond the debts, you know, the time the debt service has long since been retired. And, um, I think that's the, the short, the short version. If the energy savings over the whole life cycle of it, you know, are, show that the solar project is cheaper than just buying power, then there's, I think, just from a pure financial decision, there's a good argument that it's, makes financial sense to do it. If it's actually saving more money even while you're retiring the debt, then it kind of enters into sort of, you know, kind of no-brainer territory. Because you, you're paying for what you've been paying for anyway, and at some point, it's actually just free because the debt's retired. That's, that's kind of how I think about it from a, from a decision standpoint.
So this is for fifty thousand dollars, but we don't have an RFP, so we can't really be bound to anything other than that, right?
The, the fifty thousand dollars, so these are just our estimates based on the two point nine, about what our fifty thousand dollars would be the estimated debt issuance costs for twenty-one. And then the one ninety-four six would be the estimate of the debt finance payment in the future fiscal year.
So can I ask, what, what does phase one mean? Is that just a certain county building and then phase two is another county building? What is phase one first?
Good afternoon. It's labeled as phase one because the intent of this process was to continue to look at county facilities as they become available and make sense. And we do things like roof replacements and opportunities for additional solar, you know, sort of come on board. We just labeled this as phase one because this was our first pass at seeing what, what buildings made the most sense in terms of today's facilities. And then phase two would be, in the future, we'll look to continue to, to do processes similar to this one.
Okay, so, so this thing that got sent out to us, it was done by Pisgah, I, listen, this is, this is new to me.
Sure.
So, if, if I'm reading this right, the red here says that we, we still haven't got our money back. And if we finance this, we're not getting our money back till the twenty-fifth year.
That's correct. It's, it's, if you're looking at yearly cash inflows and outflows in terms of savings versus the debt payment, that's correct.
And, and this here does include an increase in what energy might cost in the future. It includes what would happen if something happens to the panel.
Correct.
I mean, you know, I mean, I know the panels are going to, they may last for thirty years.
Correct.
But I mean, they're going to produce the same energy in the thirtieth year that they're producing in the first year.
Correct, and that is taken into account as well. The degradation of the panel over time is done at about a half a percent per year after the twentieth year. That's kind of the industry standard. And that is taken into account in these projections, as well as the operations, maintenance, and potentially even equipment replacement is all, all factored into these costs.
Okay, so the, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the panels themselves virtually never need to be replaced. But some of the equipment around the panels, like inverters, things like that occasionally do. And so there is cost built in to these estimates that, that include that equipment replacement.
So when the RFP comes back, it, these numbers could, I mean, the, the actual electricity stuff, but the cost could be totally different.
Correct. We, we have really estimated these very conservatively. We are very hopeful that those numbers will come in lower than this and that the savings, we've also estimated very conservatively, will be more. As an example, one of the things that we didn't include in our savings were things like demand charges on utility bills, which there's no way to really model how those will be reduced, but they will be reduced. So the savings should be more and the costs should potentially be less. These are very conservative estimates.
So what happens if it's snowing outside and it's raining outside? Do we have storage capacity that, or will we continue to, we be tied to the grid? And is there any, I know we can't predict the weather.
Correct.
But is there any way of knowing that, that a lot of this cost may not be where they're at because we're not being able to use the solar energy because we don't have sunlight?
That is correct. And so, all of the modeling is done based on historical weather patterns. So when we estimate production, it's based on what the weather has been long-term. So we have some fairly, fairly good production estimates that include those potentials for very cloudy days, rain, snow, those things. Those are really all factored into what our production estimates are.
And when, and when it is raining or nighttime, the facilities are all still grid-connected, so they can still just purchase power from Duke to supplement whatever the solar is not providing?
But we, we just going to wait till we get an RFP because?
Correct. The RFP has been issued, and in fact, our, our pre-bid meeting for the RFP was yesterday. And so we, we are just in that process right now of going through this with bidders and, and we'll be getting responses back in the next several weeks.
I know there's no way they can say this is going to be a twenty-five to thirty-year lifespan. There's no way they can do that.
Uh, the, the products are, are warranted for that time. So they are-
So if we finance it at the twenty-fifth year is when we start seeing savings? True savings. Now, we can go out and say we're saving on the electricity.
Correct.
But because we're paying for the debt and the fact we're, it's-
Where it's sort of a net-
I just want to make someone understand this chart correctly.
Understood, yeah, absolutely. Where it's a net positive for the entire purchase of the, of the cost. Yes, that's, that's correct.
And that's based on our estimates, if it comes in, or if it changes that.
Okay, yes, I know if it comes in, which I would hope, I would hope it would, would.
Yes.
Twenty-five years seems an awful long time before we start saving money, so.
Sure.
All right, thanks, Jeremiah.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Jerem, I've got one, and I mean, this is completely out of my league here, solar. How about on the roof? What, you know, have you figured that in also, us putting on the roof? What we gotta replace over that twenty-five years compared to if we didn't have it? So all that's in here.
Absolutely. That, everything that, and first of all, as a part of this process, one of the things that we have to do in order to get solar panels on a roof is to work with a structural engineer and have that roof certified as, as capable of handling that additional load and not causing any additional damage, that sort of thing. So all of that stuff is looked at in advance of doing the RFP so that we can be certain that we're putting on, on a structure that makes sense and is viable for solar. And yes, roof warranties are taken into consideration. And so, you know, we, we do absolutely factor those elements in as we're deciding which buildings make the most sense for, for these installations.
Have we, have we made that decision?
Yes.
On the buildings?
Yes.
And it's, uh, already be done before the RFP, right?
This is all completed, yes, sir. Yes, sir. In terms of the structural assessments and things of that nature, yes.
So fourteen, how many buildings do you think we have that are suitable for solar?
That was our list to start with. Those were the ones that made the most sense. There are a handful of buildings that, for example, may be due for a roof replacement over the next several years, and that might sort of open up additional possibilities. But these fourteen were, were sort of the low-hanging fruit, the ones that made the most sense. And, and also, in terms of the production estimates of the systems themselves and offsetting a, a large percentage of the facility's actual utility usage.
On some of our schools, we've done this. I mean, went, you know, with different, uh, solar, or not solar, uh, the lighting. How much turnaround in pay was it? Wasn't it like five years on some of the schools that we've done?
For the LED retrofits, that's correct, yeah. It was, LED retrofits frankly are the quickest payback in, in energy efficiency. Replacing, you know, fluorescent bulbs with LEDs is a, is a very quick and very efficient payback. Unfortunately, we've, we've taken advantage of the vast majority of those where we could. And as we continue to look for how do we increase our energy efficiency and how do we add renewable energy? We, we get into, once we've made the building efficient, you know, how can we offset that, that utility usage with onsite distribution?
How many of the fourteen buildings could we do anything that would be a payback a little quicker than twenty-five years over?
Most of-
Are all fourteen buildings already equipped right now with the LED?
Yes. For the most part, the, the county has done LED bulbs.
Energy efficiency and all that, all fourteen of them buildings?
Yeah, I mean, there are certainly probably opportunities to, to look at HVAC replacement for some of these buildings. But HVAC replacement kind of falls into that same category, very high dollar, very, very long payback for the most part. But yeah, for the most part, I would say things like LEDs have been done in all, all of our facilities, yeah.
But HVAC is not a twenty-year payback. Most of them are seven to nine years, I think.
Entirely dependent on the facility, but yes, they did, definitely less than twenty-five, yeah.
I mean, the twenty-five year just scares me, okay?
Sure, I understand.
I, I continue to be excited about this and kind of look at it in a similar lens, how we think about some of our larger, or some of the economic development things that we think about locally where those long timeframes are a little hard to contemplate. It's a little hard to imagine tomorrow right now, much less twenty-five years from now. But I did have a question, it's a little, it's less about the, um, the cost savings model and more actually about the workforce that will require to install all these and what, and what sense we might have around the kind of, like, jobs that might be involved with a project of this scale. It's something I've been sort of excited about from the start and interested to see if we have any either local companies in the bidding process or companies that would be considering hiring locally. I think that's something on all of our minds right now is any project that's out there that might be bringing jobs or work online in the coming year or so, or year plus. So anyway. So anyway, it's a little off-field from the the PDF in front of us, but just wondered if you had any thoughts on that.
Well, obviously, we're not allowed to have local preference in terms of the bidding process.
Of course, yes.
That said, just to give you an example, the pre-bid meeting that we had yesterday, there were twenty-four qualified solar developers that attended the pre-bid meeting, which was a great turnout for us. We were very excited about that. Many of those are in the state of North Carolina and some actually right here in Asheville. And it's a, it is a real possibility that some of the larger corporations that are capable of handling an aggregated process of this, this scope would subcontract a certain portion of that workout to local developers. So obviously, we don't have a guarantee of that happening, but it is a real possibility and and a pretty standard business practice for some of those larger corporations.
In a project of this scale, I mean, do we have any sense of the workforce that would be involved in making it happen? Or is it premature to think about that?
It's probably a little premature to think about it, but it's, I mean, it's anywhere from probably eighteen to twenty-four months worth of projects, keeping folks busy consistently during that time.
Yeah, great, well, thanks for that.
Sure.
And and again, the RFP, you know, this is in the budget. It's, this is a project that still requires a standalone decision by the commission. So all this will get kind of debated further once we have real numbers from from folks. So thank you, Jeremiah.
You're welcome.
All right, Jennifer, we, and we are going to stop now because we have to.
We're done. We will be, we will get back with you around what those next opportunities are to provide you with additional information, working towards recommended budget.
All right. Thank you so much. We're going to take a brief break and then we'll be back for our regular five o'clock meeting.